You're not ready yet, are you Marty? You tell, tell me when you're ready.
Not quite. I am ready to roll back here whenever you're ready to go.
Marty, we have, you were echoing. Nope, we're all good. Sorry, we had one computer on out here. Goodness. All right. Good, good evening. I'm going to call the city council for the city of Missoula to order. It is July 25th, 2022. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. All right, we do not have any minutes to approve tonight. We have public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to provide public comment?
I'm sorry, can we do roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry. Hang on a second. Stay right there. We're gonna do roll call. Thanks Marty.
All right, we want to establish that we have a courtroom. Anderson.
Present.
Becerra.
Present.
Carlino.
Present.
Kontos.
Here.
Hess.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Jordan. Sorry, Kristen Jordan's absent. Nugent.
Present.
Savage. Jennifer Savage is absent. Cheryl? Did I catch the last half of present? I see you there. Sandra and Sika.
Present.
And West.
Here.
And Mayor Engen is absent. So we have two council members absent this evening.
Thank you. We have no minutes to approve tonight, but we will take public comment on non-agenda items. So if you want to provide public comment, please step up to the mic and say your name, and we ask for no more than three minutes, please. Good evening.
I'm sorry.
I said, "Good evening."
Good evening. My name is Bob Moore. Got this article. MRA OK's funding to convert one-way streets. The conversion of front and main streets to two-way circumstances has been a top priority in both the downtown master plans. Cost is $233 for the planning. And the project to complete says, paper says eight to nine million dollars. I suggest to you that that is a total, not a total waste, but probably a waste to the taxpayers. I don't see any reference on here on interest. I suggest to you that somebody will pay a lot of interest. Probably tomorrow it goes up higher when the Fed starts talking about it. I would like to see, oh, one more paragraph. Buchanan said the community has wanted to convert the streets for decades. Who is a community? Community doesn't include me. For example, I tried to get some signs put up where Flynn merges into Broadway. An extremely, extremely dangerous intersection. I don't even go to that intersection. I drive a couple of miles to avoid it. In the last six months roughly, I don't know exactly, there's been two wrecks that I personally know of and saw at the, not intersection, because there's no intersection. They just haven't. I saw two. I'm sorry, I didn't see the actual wreck. I drove up and saw the two cars where they had crashed in two different ways. In addition to that, somebody was killed. So that's three serious matters right down that one intersection. And I was told by one of the members of the MRA that we didn't have the authority to do anything because it was supposedly was not in our district. Let me repeat that. Three serious accident matters. And this city, county, whoever it is can't even put decent signs up there. I defy you to go to Flynn and Broadway and feel safe going either way. North, south, into. It's just a disgrace. I've asked a number of policemen what they think about it. They don't like it either. But we got nine million dollars plus interest for several years to make, to change from this little project that I just went over. I think it's an absolute disgrace. When I stopped and asked a lady who was involved in one of the wrecks, she was angry as she could be at the city as to why they haven't fixed that. If you think it's safe, go turn that way. Turn into Flynn or out of Flynn or any place. Dangerous. On top of that, you go out there now, I haven't been there since this happened, but they just put the stripes down England. Nice stripes. Not even needed there. That's a safe route. It's a safe route. Why are you spending money on that situation on a road that really doesn't need it? Another article. Affordable housing. He reads, he writes a paragraph. The best, best way, where is this? The best way Missoula gets affordable housing. He's arguing about the Sleepy Inn motel, which y'all may have heard me mention Sleepy Inn.
Mr. Moore, we're pushing five minutes, so if you could wrap it up.
That's too long. I should stop sooner. But then he is, one of his progress is oh, talking about the city, short and cited stupidity. That was on trying to, he was writing in about the city selling the Sleepy Inn. I'm curious as to how much they're gonna sell it for. Because when they listed it, I mean, when they bought it, it was listed in Realtors filings for around five or $600,000. You don't believe it? Go check it. Go to State Listing Head there. Five or $6,000. They paid a million one. Why did you pay a million one? I know y'all don't like to be, I'll be quick. Five minutes is too.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anyone else for public comment on items not on the agenda? See if anyone is attending virtually who wants to comment. Please raise your hand if you want to comment on items not on the agenda. All right, I'm not seeing anything. So next, we have committee meetings and the committee agendas. If you could go through that, Marty, I'd appreciate it.
I'd be happy to. And also after I get done with this, can we return to minutes? Because we, I think we do have a set of minutes that are on the agenda for approval. At least I see an attachment on this side of the agenda. That's the admin's. So tonight, we're setting up committee meetings for two weeks. City council will not be meeting next week, Monday. That is the first of August. It's budget season, ladies and gentlemen, and we get into the thick of budget at the end of the month. So instead of skipping the fifth meeting of the month when we need to be working on budget matters, city council will be not meeting that first Monday of the month. That's the, I think that's August 3rd. And so tonight, we're setting up committee meetings for two weeks, the next two weeks. So let's start it out with Budget and Finance Committee. Budget and Finance Committee will be meeting on the 27th of July from 9:00 until 10:45. Committee of the whole will meet on the 27th from 11:00 to 11:30. You know what? I forgot to share my screen. Let's share and show everybody what's going on. We'll follow along. Click my homework. All right, so Budget and Finance Committee is meeting this coming Wednesday from 9:00 to 10:45. Like I said, they'll be taking up street lighting district assessments as well as a resolution that's living assessments for Park District Number One, Road District Number One. Late breaking news this afternoon, I also had to add the assessments for the Business Improvement District Downtown and the Tourism Business Improvement District. So all of those assessments, I'll be briefing you on this coming Wednesday. And city council will be continuing their examination of the fiscal year 2023 Executive Budget. Committee of the whole will meet on this Wednesday from 11:00 to 11:30. They will be taking up a resolution requesting that Missoula County refer a crisis services levy to Missoula County voters. Public Works and Mobility Committee will meet on the 27th, this coming Wednesday, from 1:00 to 2:00 o'clock, and they will be taking up quite a number of items. Appointments to the Building Code Board of Appeals. There are two of those. Professional Services Agreement Number One with IMAG, which is an engineering firm here in town. Easy for me to say. That'll be for the East Front Water Main Replacement Project. There'll be an amendment to Professional Services Agreement with HDR Engineering for the Upper Prospect Tank Project. That's also a water project. There'll be a Professional Services Agreement with WIF Engineering here in Missoula for the Fifth Street Water Main Replacement Project. And finally, there is an agreement to release a ditch easement with Great Northern Medical Center Association. Land use and Planning Committee will meet on the 27th as well, rounding out the day from 2:15 to 2:30, and they will be taking up appointments to the District Preservation Commission next week. Budget Committee of the whole will meet on the 3rd of August from 11:00 to 12:10. They'll be continuing their conversations about the fiscal year 2023 Executive Budget. Climate Conservation and Parks Committee will meet on the 3rd from 12:25 to 12:55. They'll be taking up some reappointments to the Energy and Climate Team. There'll be an update on the Public Service Commission, on a public Public Service Commission rule change. And an update on the city's comments with respect to that. And the Playfair Tennis Court Reconstruction Project will be considered by the committee. The Housing Redevelopment and Community Programs Committee will meet on the 3rd, and they'll be taking up, they'll meet from 1:10 to 2:45. They'll take up the National Institute of Health's grant-funded agreements for Project Year Number Four. They'll have some continuing information on the short-term rental data analysis. And there is an agreement with respect to the Bridge Apartments. And that is it.
Thank you, Marty. Next on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. Items on the Consent Agenda were approved in city council committees to be placed on the Consent Agenda to save time at council meetings by voting on them as a package. The city clerk will read the list aloud, so citizens watching will know what is on the Consent Agenda. We'll invite community comment on these items before we vote. Marty?
Tonight's Consent Agenda only has two items. The first is to approve counts payable in the amount of $946,155.11 for checks that are dated tomorrow, July 26th of 2022. And number two is to appoint Jesse McCormick and Amelia Johnson to serve on the Energy and Climate Team as youth team members with a term that begins immediately and ends on May 31st of 2023.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on the Consent Agenda? Seeing no public comment. Any counselors who want to divide the question or abstain? Ms. Becerra?
So like to abstain from voting on item 5.2. I wasn't present during the meeting and almost related to one of the appointees.
Okay, thank you. Marty, if you can do a roll call vote.
I'd be happy to. On the Consent Agenda, Anderson.
Yes.
Becerra.
Yes, abstaining on item 5.2.
Carlino.
Yes.
Kontos.
Yes.
Hess.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Basika.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Yes.
Would any of you like to change your vote? That's 10 eyes and two absent on item number one, and 10 eyes, two absent, and one abstention on number two.
Thank you. We have no comments from city staff, city agencies, community forums, neighborhood councils, boards, commissions, or authorities tonight, but we do have a special presentation, and it's a proclamation tonight. A proclamation entitled "A Day to Commemorate the 32nd Anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act." So I'll read the proclamation. "Whereas disability is a natural part of the human experience, and over 12% of the Missoula population lives with one or more disabilities. And whereas 32 years ago, the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, the first comprehensive declaration of civil rights for people with disabilities prohibiting discrimination based solely on one's disability status, became law on July 22nd, 1990. And whereas the ADA has expanded opportunities for Americans living with disabilities to participate in the mainstream of American life, enjoy employment opportunities, purchase goods and services, and be treated as equal and valued members of society. And whereas we recognize that community participation by individuals with disabilities is vital to the success of our community, and while many barriers towards that end have been removed, much more work is needed to realize the full potential of the ADA and to reduce attitudinal barriers, labels, and stigmas toward people, towards people with disabilities that are still all too prevalent. Now therefore, I, John Engen, Mayor of the City of Missoula and the State of Montana, hereby recognize the 26th day of July 2022 as a day to commemorate the 32nd anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, the ADA, in Missoula, Montana, and recognize the hard work and sacrifice of disability advocates and policymakers who have worked tirelessly to ensure that people living with disabilities have access to the same rights and opportunities as everyone else, and to reaffirm our commitment to fully implement the ADA and dedicate ourselves to continue to work towards a more just, accessible, and inclusive community. And it is signed by Mayor John Engen." Is there anyone in the attendees who came to comment on this tonight? I'm not seeing any raised hands, but I did just want to comment that we discuss the ADA periodically, and we incorporate it in our policies. And I have always appreciated counselors, especially Julie Merritt over the years, who remember to raise that issue and help us view anything that comes before us when necessary through that lens. So, and thanks to all those in our community who advocate for it. Okay, moving on to our public hearings, we have one item under final consideration tonight. Items under final consideration have had a public hearing. The hearing was held open to allow time for additional public comment before final consideration and action by the city council. The chairperson of the standing city council committee will make a motion, and we invite community comment on each item tonight. Item 8.1, the Resolution Vacating the South Sussex Bypass Right-of-Way and a Related Public Utility Easement Vacation is in front of us. Brant Dolan is here. Brant, did you have anything additional to add substantively? Otherwise, we'll go to questions from council.
No, I have nothing else. Thanks.
Nothing else to add? Okay. Were there any questions from council regarding this item? Ms. Raybine?
Well, I'm not a city council person, but I did notice an error on the recommended motion for the agenda. And it is this. You've already adopted the Resolution of Intention to Vacate the Streets. So tonight, you will be considering the resolution that actually vacates the street. So that will be adopt a resolution to vacate rather than a resolution.
Marty, I'm barely able to hear you. Can you just?
Okay.
I think this is from Merta, because you're gonna be reading the motion. Did you catch that, Merta? Okay, Merta says she caught it, so I think we're good. Okay. All right, back to, any questions from council? Seeing no questions. We will go to Ms. Becerra for a motion as Chair of Public Works and Mobility.
Okay, I move that we adopt a resolution calling for the removal of Sussex Avenue between South Avenue and Brook Street from the Missoula Urban Area Highway System, and adopt a resolution to vacate the South Sussex, Sussex Bypass Right-of-Way that cuts diagonally through Block 32 of the Home Vale Edition and the Public Utility Eastman that was created when the alley was vacated, as shown in Exhibit 8A, and subject to the conditions of approval. Marty, did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Becerra. Let me call for public comment on this item. Anyone would like to give public comment that is attending, please raise your hand. And anyone that is in the audience, not seeing anyone? All right, any comments from council on this item? Ms. Becerra?
I just wanna note my support for this project. I think that this is a really good example of how different agencies, the city, can collaborate to promote and and actually develop permanently, permanently affordable housing in Missoula, which is much needed. So I am happy to support this.
Thank you, Ms. Cheryl.
Yeah, thanks. I, I agree with Ms. Becerra. I also just wanted to add that this being part of Ward 4 and someplace that I, an area I frequently drive by in town, it has sat empty for 20-some years, if not, I, I mean, it's not been developed. We thought maybe this would be a developable, developable piece of land as we cut the street in, in between, and that that would work for the intersection that it fed into. But what we found is that it, it was never developed, and having those triangles just did not work. And so I think this is a great resolution to a prime piece of property in, in the middle of Missoula. So I'm happy to support it, and the affordable housing piece is, of course, a big component.
Great, thank you. Mr. Carlino?
I'm happy to support this tonight. I obviously tried to amend it to make it 75 years, which is the industry standard for permanently affordable housing. And I, but overall, I think this is a positive project. It'll have, create a lot of units and subsidize affordable units for 35 years. But I do believe this is a project that the 2050s city council's gonna have to take on again after that period of affordability comes up. So I just hope to push for 75 years or permanently affordable housing projects in the future. But I think overall, this is a really good project for the community.
Ms. Anderson?
Thanks so much, Madam Chair. I want to also add my words of support for this project. And it's really great to see the partnership, as Ms. Becerra said, amongst the various agencies and the developer who, I mean, this overall project is netting 107 units that are critical to our community at various different levels of targeted affordability, which I think is important. I do think that there has been some debate, and we've had many robust meetings about, you know, the units that are being deed restricted and heard from experts on the reasoning behind 35 years. And I think we'll be hearing something here in a little bit in later on in the committee agenda that kind of talks about, you know, what does ultimately happen after a period of time and how you have to maintain these buildings. But I mean, this is, you know, a public-private partnership that I think really leverages the tools that we have in our tool belt to provide some really critical housing for many people in our community. And I'm, I'm really happy to support this, and I'm excited to see this project going and look forward to other opportunities to support projects similar. Thank you.
Mr. Nugent?
Thank you. I would echo my, my colleagues' comments, and I would just say that I do want to say thank you to Blue Line Development for, for the creativity in, in coming forward with a project like this that, that greatly enhances the number of units that we can get in that block. I think that, that, that if, if people really dug into and understood what could be built there as it is split into two versus what we're going to be able to see developed, it makes a big difference. And I, I just think that we should acknowledge that, that Blue Line Development kind of put together a group that had this idea and kind of, you know, put, put some of the chips out on the table, and, and that's the sort of creativity we're gonna need.
Great, thanks. If you guys could take your hands down after your talk, unless you're raising it because you want to comment again. It just gets a little confusing. Ms. West?
Thank you. So I also am going to support this project. I think it fixes a couple of different things in this location. The first being, of course, making those two triangles of land something functional and make it possible to support a decent level of density. I think it also will really help the traffic flow in that area. If you ever try to access the MCPS admin buildings back there, it is a really confusing intersection, and people, especially folks that are coming in from out of town during the fair, get it wrong. And I've really, I've witnessed lots of accidents, or almost accidents, at that intersection. And I think this project will redesign some really troublesome intersections if it comes to fruition. And I also just briefly wanted to speak to the 35 years of affordability on those units. There isn't really, I would say, an industry standard when it comes to, I suppose, periods of affordability, because so many of them are dependent on their funding sources. So for example, if something is funded with home or community development block grant funds, the period of affordability is dependent. block grant funds, the period of affordability is dependent on the amount of money that's invested in each individual unit. And those actually top out at 20 years. So they actually, they start to step from 5, 10, 15 to a max of 20 years. Low-income housing tax credits are a little different, of course, and I think they vary slightly from state to state. I think Montana has an additional affordability requirement where I believe it's 42 years, although I think in some states, the affordability tops out at 30 years. And I think that today's agenda is actually really interesting, because we see this agenda item, and further on down in our agenda, we have a public hearing to invest in what still is and was developed as a Lytec project. And the city helped purchase those units to continue their affordability, because Lytec projects do sunset. I think in Missoula, we are so fortunate to have developers who use these funding tools that, I guess, also use additional mechanisms to attain permanent affordability. So Homeward, for example, because of their mission, all of their projects will be permanently affordable. And projects that are funded with home and CDBG that our community land trusts do in this community also have perpetual affordability. But that is a, I guess, an added layer that is a part of those models. I'm not sure where 75 years comes from. My guess, it is because those models use a 75-year ground lease, but of course, that is renewed every time a home is sold. So you end up with perpetual affordability. So I think that 35 years in this scenario makes sense, because it is rental housing that is going to deteriorate over time, and there needs to be the ability for the owner to pursue some sort of funding to reinvest in this project. And at this point, it is unknown if that is private financing, or if in 35 years, the city of Missoula can play a role in continuing to preserve affordable housing at this location.
Thank you, Ms. West. Mr. Hess?
Thanks. I appreciate all the comments up until now, and I'll try not to repeat them. Appreciate the developer here. This is a developer with a track record for developing affordable units around the country. And it's good to see them doing development in their own backyard in a good public-private partnership. And it's really a public-private partnership because of the right-of-way that is being abandoned, or vacated, rather, on this project. And I think when we, when the city and the county and the MPO and the state put together the Malfunction Junction project back in the 90s, it was expected that these two little triangles would redevelop. And that hasn't happened. And our understanding of transportation best practices have changed over the past couple of decades. And now it's really much more functional for South Avenue and for Sussex to remove this diagonal, cut through that block, and to reroute traffic as proposed. So I think from a traffic functionality standpoint, it's going to work really well. And I also want to highlight that this is an area with some of the highest quality public transit in our community. Mountain Lines Route 1 is a high-frequency route that operates on 15-minute headwaves throughout the day, on weekdays, and now operates seven days a week and runs till 10:45 PM on weekdays and Saturdays. So it's, living here, and also Mountain Lines Route 7 is lesser frequency, but still direct service to a lot of areas of our community, and is obviously the centerpiece of the RACE grant along Brook Street that looks at installing bus rapid transit in the future. So this will be an area where the price of the housing is suppressed by the affordability measures, and a household's ability to get around the community without a car, or maybe with one less car, can further kind of add to the affordability. So it's really win-win in that regard. So I'm happy to support it, and I'm grateful for everyone who helped put it together.
Thank you. Ms. Vaseka?
Thank you. I went to Sentinel, and I always thought that this bypass was very, very odd. So I'm happy to support this tonight. There was, there are some concerns that I had with some of the things that my colleagues were saying before. It's just a matter of disagreement. But the property owner was on board with having the permanently affordable housing on this development. So I didn't want to interrupt that at all. But my thoughts are the more affordable housing you have in one side of the unit that raises all the rents and the other one. So what would be in the budget of a middle-income family would kind of put it, would put it out on the upper end, and they could no longer afford it, having the more affordable housing on the other side. So it just kind of, you kind of got to pick one. You've got to lower it here, but you've got to raise it there, because, you know, everything has to balance out in economics. And so that's just my thoughts on this. But I'm happy to support the resolution as is. And like my colleagues have said before me, it turns two triangles into usable, buildable land. So very happy to support it.
Thank you, Mr. Carlino.
Yeah, I moved to amend the conditions of approval under number eight, the first sentence, to say the developer shall set aside a minimum of 20% of residential rental units, which should not be less than 22 units for households earning up to 80% of area median income for a minimum period of 65 years. And can I speak to that motion?
Let's take public comment on it first. Any public comment on the motion to amend? Anyone in the attendee virtual room who wants to raise their hand to comment on this motion to amend? Seeing none. Go ahead, Mr. Carlino.
Yeah, I guess I just will note that this right-of-way vacation allows for an additional 80 units. But along with that, we are also using over $2 million of Missoula Redevelopment Agency tax funds towards this project as well. And I just believe that the people of Missoula could be getting a better deal than the 35 years. And I just encourage more debate on these things in the future with the council as a whole, along with the developer and in front of the public.
Mr. Nugent?
Thank you, Madam President. Councilman Carlino, I appreciate your comments, and I would refer everybody back to the committee meeting where we discussed this, because I think we had a very robust conversation that I hope we don't play out the whole two hours of it again right here. But I think it's important to note that the MRA may be spending $2 million, but a big chunk of that $2 million is going to a roundabout that, as a Ward 4 resident and a business operator on that street, I don't actually think is necessary for the impact of this project alone. I think the roundabout has a greater community benefit that is just being put into this project, because there's an opportunity to make sense. So I think that we should be careful saying that they're getting $2 million for the housing project, because I don't believe that that's accurate. I also, as we've discussed and will discuss more, you know, when a private developer is bringing a project forward, you know, obviously, everything's a trade-off, and it's like a balance sheet, and it all has to pencil for them, or we risk losing the private investment. And taking that affordability from 35 years to 60 years, 65 years, greatly changes that equation. And that's something that I don't believe that we can just do in a setting like this and assume that they're going to be able to continue the project. I think that you're right, you know, having more conversation about it could be a good thing, but I don't think that it's appropriate to do it at this point in the project.
Ms. Vaseka?
Thanks. And Daniel, I really want to thank you for really having a passion about this. But as I said before, I'm going to have to respectfully disagree with this and for what I just stated a couple of minutes ago. But also, I'm also not a big fan of the MRA, but I am a fan of taxpayer dollars going towards streets and infrastructure and sidewalks. And it sounds like the MRA is funding the street roundabout on this, and that is not very cheap. And so I dislike agreeing with the MRA, but I think I have to agree with this part of it this time. So I will respectfully not support your motion.
Ms. Anderson?
Thanks so much, Madam Chair. I agree with Mr. Nugent in the respects that we debated and discussed at length with all parties included in our committee meeting. And someone's going to have to pinch-hit for me on the date, exact date of that committee meeting. But I, you know, I think that we're losing sight of the fact that this is 107 total units. Yes, 22 of them are going to be deemed permanently affordable. But as was stated in committee meeting, there is various bans of affordability within the project. So there are different units, number of units set aside for various AMI targets. And so it really, in this one whole project, you would get 107 units that are targeted at a variety of very specific affordable bans, I guess, for lack of a better word. And I think that that's really important to take into account. So it's not just focusing on the 22 units. It's focusing on the entire project. And I think that in a moment like this, the very end of a committee, to kind of change, you know, make an amendment that would so radically change it, after we've had quite a bit of debate about it, just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, not knowing the long-term effects and how it could jeopardize all 107 affordable units, just focusing on 22. So I will not be supporting this amendment.
Ms. West?
Can I ask some questions? Is that okay?
Good.
So my first question was if it's accurate to say that any of the MRA funding is going directly into the housing portion of this project. And then my second question is, like, can anybody speak to how a change like this would impact the viability of the project overall?
We've got Ellen Buchanan from the MRA here. And also...
Yeah, I'm...
Go ahead, Ellen.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to that. The MRA, the TIF funding that's going into this project is basically to remove buildings and to build the public infrastructure. There is no money going directly into the housing.
Thanks. And did we get all of your questions answered? Heidi?
My second question was if anyone could speak to the, like, the viability of the project if a change like that were made right now.
Do we have someone who can speak to that? Emily Harris Shears. Thanks, Emily.
Hi. I obviously haven't spoken to the developer about this amendment, but as we discussed in the committee meeting on the 22nd about the proposed amendment of increasing the period of affordability to 75 years, the risk there is that the loan is typically for 40 years, and that it may make the refinancing challenging. And so it will be harder, most likely, to get a loan in the beginning. And that could impact the viability of this project, as well as the overall impact to the cost of the, cost of the developer of the income-restricted units. You're essentially extending it or doubling it, and that will potentially impact the viability of the project as well.
Thank you, Emily. Any other questions? Follow-up?
Just say that I won't support the motion. Thank you, Ms. Becerra.
Thank you. Several comments. I guess, a question for my colleague is, it just seems like, you know, after hearing that 75 years is the ideal, it seems like 65 is an arbitrary number of years. I also think that we have heard from the MRA several times as to how investment is made with TIF funding, and it's not directly put into the development or the building itself, but rather, it creates the right scenario, the canvas, where a development can take place and produce affordable housing. So, you know, changing the parameters of the developer will, I'm sure, will certainly affect the viability of this, of this project. I also feel like we have heard from several experts on the field of affordable housing, and 35 years is a common and reasonable number of years. And I also worry that making changes like these last minute really can cause issues in terms of the trust that we have with developers, especially this developer who specializes in developing affordable housing. So I, for all those reasons, I am not in a position to jeopardize this project. Thanks.
Mr. Carlino?
Thanks. Yeah, I think 75 years, 65 years was a compromise after 75 years didn't get passed. But I guess, to speak to the MRA money points, I think the roundabout is a really positive thing for the community, and I suppose that doesn't go directly towards the project. But deconstruction does go directly towards creating this new housing project. And there is a natural financial incentive to deconstruct and resell those materials or reuse those materials for another project. So I have a hard time coming along to thinking that giving millions to big developers or corporations to deconstruct is really the best way for, to protect our environment and work to stop the climate crisis. I think those things should be mandatory, or at least we should just use that money towards something else positive, rather than deconstruction. But I guess, my main point I want to make is that we wouldn't have last-minute amendments if we had the public and all council members in on the conversation in the first place, when we're talking about negotiating affordable housing units with developers.
Ms. West?
So I think deconstruction is a community value that we have decided to support, especially since we have a goal of getting to zero waste. There is no incentive to deconstruct otherwise. It is much cheaper, much quicker to bulldoze a building and take it to the landfill. Construction waste is our number-one component of things going to the landfill. And yeah, if that is something we want to see happen in Missoula, I think it's completely appropriate for MRA funding to incentivize it. And, yep, I just wanted to respond to that, because there is, developers are not deconstruction experts, and they are definitely not going to stockpile the materials and sell them in parallel to actually, to developing a property. It takes a long time.
Ms. Cheryl?
I don't have anything to add to what Heidi just said. I was going to refute those points. I think that achieving our zero-waste goals is really, really important. And it's absolutely cheaper just to knock something down and throw it in the landfill. And I'm happy for MRA funds to go toward achieving those zero-waste goals. They're really important for our communities' environmental health.
Ms. Vaseka?
I have a question, if that's okay. So the deconstruction, there's not that much on that land. Is the deconstruction talking about that building on there, and also the deconstruction of the roadway that goes through it? Or is it just the building on the land? Somebody could speak to that. Do we have someone from staff who can answer that specific question?
Ellen?
You know, I can pull the application and try to unravel those numbers, but I suspect that, I mean, the vast majority of the cost here is obviously the street reconstruction and the roundabout. And I, you know, I would have to go back into the application and look and see exactly how those numbers split out.
I'm satisfied with that answer. Thank you. Okay, I'm satisfied with that answer. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Seeing no other hands raised, I'll just make some brief comments on the motion to amend. And I think it's really bad practice and bad policy to try and set unrealistic affordable housing thresholds that developers must meet. It's a good way to kill a project, and then not only do you not get the affordable housing, we aren't going to get the extra housing stock either. And there are, there's a huge amount of work that goes into creating these formulas for the developer, and they work with staff, and there's a, a lot of expertise. So I'm not going to, at the midnight hour, come in and make any kind of unrealistic requirement via an amendment that would basically kill a project. And with that, I'll call the question. So there is no, any public comment on calling the question? Seeing no public comment and no one in the attendee room to provide public comment on calling the question. Marty, can you please take a roll call vote on calling the question?
Oh, here we go. All right, on the motion for the previous question, calling the question for the folks watching at home, calling the question is a motion to end debate. So Becerra?
Yes.
Carlini?
No.
Kontos?
Yes.
Hess?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
Nugent?
No.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vaseka?
No.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I missed the vote on Nugent.
No.
That is six eyes and four nays.
Thank you. That passes. So now we need to vote on the motion to amend. And Marty, did you want to restate the motion to amend, just so that everyone's clear what the gist of it is?
I did not catch the motion to amend, so I sent an email to, to Councilperson Carlini to send me the text of the amendment, so maybe he would be our best.
Could you just restate the motion to amend?
Yes. I move to amend the conditions of approval under number eight, the first sentence, to state, "The developer shall set aside a minimum of 20% of the residential rental units, which shall not be less than 22 units for households earning up to 80% of area median income for a minimum period of 65 years."
Thank you. If we could have a roll call vote on the motion to amend.
All right, on the amendment, Carlini?
Yes.
Kontos?
No.
Hess?
No.
Jones?
No.
Nugent?
No.
Cheryl?
No.
Vaseka?
No.
West?
No.
Anderson?
No.
Becerra?
No.
And would any of you like to change your vote? That's one eye and nine nays.
Thank you. So now we're back to the regular motion, which is in front of us. We've taken public comment on that motion. We've had council questions and discussion. Were there any further questions or coun, or comments from council on the main motion? Seeing none, we will have a roll call vote on the main motion.
Hey, on the main motion? Kontos?
Yes.
Hess?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vaseka?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Becerra?
Yes.
And Carlini?
Yes.
Would any of you like to change your vote? That is 10 ayes and two upsets.
Great, that passes. Thank you. All right, moving on to our two public hearings tonight. State law and city council rules set guidelines for inviting community comment in a formal way on certain issues. Following a staff report on each item, the city council and the mayor invite community comment during COVID-19. City council is holding the public hearing, holding the public hearing open for a week and then voting the following week, unless there is a requirement for a final action on the night of the public hearing. And let me see, the first one is 9.1 Homeward Creekside Tax Credit Application. And we will be voting on this item tonight. So we have Ms. Shear, Emily Harris Shears, here to present on this.
Hey, thanks. I'll share my screen. I'm hoping you can see a PDF.
Yep, we can see it. Looks good.
Thanks. Well, hello, I'm Emily Harris Shears. I'm a housing policy specialist with Community Planning, Development, and Innovation. Thank you for hosting the public hearing for Homeward's Creekside Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Application to the Montana Board of Housing. Homeward is applying for Montana housing tax credits to provide necessary rehabilitation to the Creekside apartment complex and preserve the dedicated use as income-restricted housing for an additional period of affordability for 46 years. Tonight's public hearing is an opportunity to hear community perspectives and input on whether Creekside and the proposed rehabilitation meets a community need. This also satisfies the state of Montana's public hearing requirement for tax credit applications. And there are three, just some background before I turn it over, there are three primary mechanisms for income-restricted housing. New construction starts with an initial public investment and a period of affordability. Acquisition is exactly what it sounds like. It brings existing housing into a dedicated use through new public investment and preservation, which protects existing dedicated income-restricted housing with an additional investment and an extended period of affordability. And the project that's before you today is not requesting funding from the city of Missoula at this time, but participating in the public hearing is a requirement of the, of the process. And so I just want to also highlight that the city's adopted housing policy, A Place to Call Home, elevates the importance of preservation and the role that the city and council can play in advocating for more tax credit investment in our region. Tax credits are an important funding resource and can be quite competitive, given our state's population, which limits the total share of tax credits that we have access to. Ways to support projects include strategies we're utilizing for this project, like partnering with applicants to host public hearings, sharing letters of support and working collaboratively with the applicant to attend key Montana Board of Housing meetings to express our support. The item before you includes a motion to authorize Council President Jones to sign a letter of support on behalf of council. And with that, I will turn the presentation over to Heather McMylin, Homeward's Project Development Director.
Great.
And I'm not sure if Heather's been elevated yet. If we could please elevate her.
Hang on a second. Okay, Heather, you should be able to talk now. You can unmute yourself. Perfect.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes. And Emily, we're still on the same slide with, is that where you want us to be? With the three bubbles? Ah, perfect. Okay, great. Good evening, Heather. Thanks for joining us.
Great, thank you. I did have a small moment of panic when I got thrown out of Zoom, but I'm here back in, here now. Great. Again, my name's Heather McMylin. I'm the Project Development Director for Homeward. You can go ahead and advance to the next slide. I'm here tonight to talk to you guys about Creekside. Creekside is located between here and East Missoula, right along the Clarkport Corridor there. 161 homes located right between East Missoula and Missoula. Go ahead and advance to the next slide. We spent some quality time talking about this at the Housing Redevelopment Community Program Committee. And so I'm going to go over the higher level tonight, but I'm also here to answer any questions as we go. So please, by all means, ask. Creekside apartments were built by a private developer in 1996. It's 161 homes in actually 15, 14 different buildings with one community building located at this property. It's a mix of Studio Ones, Twos, and Threes. And we were lucky enough in 2017, working with the city, the city issued a 501(c)(3) conduit bond in which First Security Bank purchased that bond, and we were able to compete with market rate developers to hold and preserve Creekside and maintain its original affordability. You guys had a pretty healthy discussion just previously about periods of affordability, and you're all right at different various levels. And we can get into that and unpack that later, but as far as Creekside is concerned, this is a low-income housing tax credit project, and it was built in 1996. And at that point, the Montana Housing, previously Montana Board of Housing, only required 30 years of affordability. They have since changed those rules, and anytime we apply for tax credits now, and in the past probably 15 years, we commit to 46 years of affordability. And Commissioner West was correct, every state's a little bit different, but we all can, we all commit to 40 years, 46 years of affordability. So let's go ahead and advance to the next slide. Creekside's in a really unique position right now. We knew when we purchased the project in 2017 that we were going to, one, compete against market rate developers who wanted to hold the project, let the period of affordability burn off, and in 2026, they could take Creekside to market rate. We also knew that if we didn't preserve it, it would go to market. But also, at that time, we knew there was significant rehab necessary. At that point, it was pretty clear with the capital needs assessment and visual inspections of the building that a lot of the materials used to construct Creekside at the time in 1996 would be coming to the end of their useful life. And so this is a really, again, we had a robust conversation, but should be continued where you're talking about periods of affordability. Right now, we're looking to do a pretty extensive rehab on Creekside, and why we're here in front of you today, talking about accessing housing credits from the state. Please go ahead and advance. Yeah, we currently own the property and they're working with Tamara Property Management, and they're doing their best. They're patching the roots when the shingles fly off with the Hellgate winds, repairing decks, dealing with failing materials. Buildings just simply don't last forever. The vinyl siding that the developer used at the time of building it, the fasteners are failing, some of those panels are coming off. There's just simply buildings don't last forever. So it's a topic of conversation that we should spend a lot, a lot of quality time digging into. But for today's purposes, just know what we would like to do is do metal roofs and cementitious siding and replace the really efficient materials that were used in 1996 to build it, and really upgrade the energy performance of the windows and do a few things where we know those buildings components will last longer. You can go ahead and advance to the next slide. And again, we've deferred maintenance, and we've only done what we can actually do with money from operations. And so we've done a pretty decent job, but there's definitely some deferred maintenance. Please advance. To the next slide. Thank you. So what we are proposing and what is in front of you today with the letter of support we're requesting is that we are applying to Montana Housing for a 9% loan and housing tax credit application. We were asked to apply. The applications are due on August 1st, and we won't know about that 9% tax credit application until October. What we're doing is proposing, because this is a very large project, and the 9% is limited on how much we can ask, or we are also pairing it with a 4% tax credit. The short version of that is the 4% tax credit gives you about 40% of the equity that you need to do the rehabilitation. The rest is debt. The 9% is more, 70 to 80% of the money you need for the project. But this is a commonly used, in recent years, commonly used structure, and we are looking to apply it to Creekside. Please advance the slide. Great. So the proposed improvements I talked a bit about, it's mostly building envelope, mechanical units, electrical fixtures, things that are just at the end of their useful life. We are also doing a unit-by-unit inspection. We're going to comb through and make sure that cabinets and, you know, flooring and all the finished materials are, are prioritized in order of need and trying to stretch the dollars as, as far as we can. Please advance. Yeah, so again, the portfolio, preserving our portfolio is just as important as building the 202 homes at Trinity, building the projects you guys just talked about, Elagio's and other 200 homes, Homeward has hundreds of units around Missoula. This project is also vitally important to Missoula's existing portfolio. Buildings age, it's very important to take them and rehabilitate them as necessary. And so the conversation, the program of the low-income housing tax credit is, you know, just old enough, we're seeing these projects come to fruition. We, years ago, built a fireweed court using Hardy panel and Hardy siding, and we still haven't had to paint the building, and vinyl siding on this building is starting to fail. So we're really trying to invest back into this project and extend the life past just the initial baseline efficient building materials and give Creekside additional life, because preserving these units is just as important as building new. Please go ahead and advance. Great. So we'll just end on the fact that we're really grateful for you guys having the conversation we had at committee. We're also very excited to request tonight for a letter of support showing that Creekside and the rehabilitation and preservation of this project meets a strong community need here in Missoula. We are very excited about the project and bringing new life, and want to be very clear that the entire reason we're doing this is so that this project doesn't, didn't go to market in 2017. We don't intend on selling the project. We really are excited to be able to reinvest in this project to extend its useful life and its period of affordability, so that all the residents currently living at Creekside can stay and have a really healthy, safe living condition. So if there are any questions, I'm actually very happy to answer them. Love to get into a discussion about some other topics around periods of affordability and things that would have come up tonight at any point. Would love to weigh in on some of those things, but for any purposes on Creekside, please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. All right, any questions for? Why don't you take that slide there? Thanks. Ms. West, questions?
So I did have a question on the 4% versus the 9% tax credit. And I know that the 4% tax credit is not competitive, not quite the same process. And so I was wondering if you had any indication from the state if they would be willing to award the 4% tax credit funding, even if this 9% tax credit application doesn't make it through the competitive process?
That's a very reasonable question, Heidi. I appreciate that. I appreciate your West. The 4%, we are lucky in Montana, and this won't last forever, but our 4% are not overasked. So at any one point, we can apply to the state the 4% credits, and they know this project is coming via the 9%, but also that we'll be submitting a 4% application. Really, the the necessary rehabilitation on this building, because it was built in 1996 for the most effective cost point possible at that point in time, we just need that infusion of the 9%, but at any point, if we could figure out how, if, if we weren't awarded the 9%, we would come back, restructure it as a 4% and do all the rehab we could do with the resources available. And that would be something that we simply, on a rolling clock, can apply for and work through. So it is not a, as competitive yet in Montana's market, but not long from now, just with our housing demands around the state and outside developers coming in, it may become competitive, but it would be something that the Board of Housing is very committed to solving for. So did I answer that question?
You did. Thank you. Ms. Cheryl?
Yeah, thanks. And Heidi, I appreciate the question about those credits. I'm curious, you know, if, if on this project, we had done something like what was, I don't know if you were in the meeting the whole time, but being suggested of doing a 75-year. If we had, if we weren't at the end of our, you know, guaranteed affordability, what would that? what would that do as the building was kind of falling apart? And we were looking to get tax credits on this project. I, I'm kind of going back to our earlier conversation because I don't understand how tax credits work. And that, can you just talk about that a little more?
Sure. Yeah, no, no problem. I will say, I did, I did listen to the discussion, and it really depends on how a project is underwritten, how it's put together, what the targets are. There is nothing simple. Our jobs used to be fun. It was all problem solving, and it's just not that fun anymore because it's all complicated. But in the world of tax credits, this particular project is at risk because, and I, I kind of glossed over it in presentation mode, but the fact that the Board of Housing put a deed restriction on the property in nineteen ninety-six, in two thousand twenty-six, that goes away. And if we hadn't competed, if you all hadn't supported us with the conduit bond, and we hadn't purchased it in nineteen, two thousand seventeen, it would have gone to market. And somebody would have purchased it, held it, taken losses, and then let it go. Just the deed restrictions would be gone. They are across from the university. They could have, before COVID, had, you know, market rate rents. Today's market, that's a whole other ballgame. And we're seeing, we've competed head to head with private developers. There are a lot of great nonprofit developers like Blue Line we work with that wouldn't be doing this. There's outside developers that would come in and make offers, and this has happened where they're buying tax credit properties close to the end of a period of affordability when there's no deed restriction anymore, and they will pay three to five million dollars more than they're worth to take those losses and then take it to market. Because just, we are, we are just in that kind of market condition now for being able to charge pretty significant rents. And so from the tax credit world, I'm really glad that a lot of our properties are, have that longer affordability. It was a choice by the state to extend it from thirty years to forty-six years. And the, I could talk for a long time on this. The limited partner is only around for the first fifteen, but we were committing to thirty in the beginning, and now we're committing to forty-six. And so by us getting credits now, we're awarded credits in two thousand twenty-three, that clock starts over again. We will, because we've been asked for the investment, receive the credits. We'll comply with the limited partner for fifteen years. They'll go away, but we'll still have another, was it thirty-one years after that to keep this affordable? But I think the healthy conversation we're having as a community, because we had this at the committee and we work with staff, is that you have to reinvest. You have to, you know, we have properties that, yes, we built well, and we were very adamant that you build energy efficient, durable materials, all things sustainability means, tied directly to affordability. But those buildings also won't last forever. We may have Lennox flats need, you know, control replacements or capital needs as we go over these coming years, and we're really looking deep into our portfolio to be able to maintain their affordability because there's really large capital expenditures coming up when things wear out. And so we're going to have to look as a, you know, community to reinvest in that because we can't just simply borrow the money to cover it. And we want to, if you want the projects to remain affordable, have a longer restriction. Let's say you want to have a seventy-five year restriction. You have to be willing to invest in them ongoing as the buildings age. And hopefully, we're designing and building the right way. I didn't mean to go down, you know, all these depths of conversation, but none of the stuff you guys are grappling with now is, is simple. So I, I could talk for hours, so I should probably be respectful of your time. But I mean, I hope I answered the question if I was clear on how the tax credit piece works.
Yeah, thanks. Madam Chair, may I have a follow-up?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, that was, I think that was clear, and I appreciate that. And I, I think that one of the pieces, it's also important here, not understanding all of it. I, I want to be honest, it's, it's very complicated, as you know, and you could talk for hours on it. But is that we're, we're creating with, with this, we're creating a long, longer time of affordability, and we're making livable housing. I mean, we want to make sure that, that we, we don't want to create slums. We want to, we want to create livable housing for our community. Thanks, Heather. I really appreciate the work that you guys do and your expertise in this area. So just have a lot of, a lot of respect for what you do. Thanks.
Thanks, and I don't see any of the raised hands. I did have a quick question for you, Heather. If you could just shortly explain the, you were talking about how the four percent tax credits are not overasked. So that's much easier to get. Nine percent are very competitive, and I know Missoula goes to bat as often as they can to take them home to our community. But this, just clarify a little bit, this goes in front of the State Montana Housing Board? Is that the name of it?
It's not, it's, it's Montana Board of Housing. The staff component is Montana Housing, but the board is governor-appointed, Montana Board of Housing.
Thanks, and I just kind of wanted to comment. I know projects in Missoula that have been built with the nine percent, and I know we try and get those as often as possible, but if, otherwise, we take the four percent. This is a tool from the state that really, really impacts what we can build on the ground. And it appears that the state legislature is focusing now on affordable housing, and there is a gigantic surplus with the state of Montana. And I hope there are some conversations happen about this because I've, over the years, I've gone to Helena in front of this, the Housing Board to advocate for certain projects, and it's really competitive. So, and we're competing against other Montana communities, and frankly, we're all in the same boat. So this, this, to me, is low hanging fruit that could be addressed. Just saying. Okay, so moving on, any other questions from council? Seeing no other questions, we will need a motion from Ms. West, and then we'll call for public comment.
All right, so the motion is to authorize Council President Jones to sign the letter of support for the Creekside Low Income Housing Tax Credit Application. And I'll hold my comments still after. The public has a chance to comment.
Any public comment on the motion that is in front of us? Please come up to the podium and state your name and try and keep it to three minutes.
Sure. My name is Akilish Bemler, and I am familiar with the Creekside Apartments. I remember when they were built, and I've seen them recently. And yeah, they're definitely sloppy at this point. I do wonder if there's been any assessments of possible hundred, thousand-year flood assessments, given its geographic location and the climate instability regionally, if there's been any such studies. That's kind of a main concern of mine on this project. Just curious, do you have any information that you're?
Thank you. And could, could I ask you to spell your name just so that when they do the transcript, it's not as challenging? Go ahead.
Yes, it's difficult. So it's Akilish, spelled A-K-H-I-L-E-S-H. Last name is Bemler, spelled B-O-E-H-M-L-E-R.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other public comment on this item? And I'll check our attendees. Raise your hand if you'd like to comment virtually. Seeing none, Ms. West.
So I, first of all, I want to thank Heather and her team for being willing to go back to Helena year after year and apply for these funds. I, if, if you've never gone to Helena to watch the Montana Board of Housing evaluate these projects, kind of the last end leg of the application process, I suppose. It is incredibly nerve wracking, and they are all good projects. There is so much need. There's usually millions of dollars more in asks than the funding that is available. And the one time I went, I sat next to Heather, and my stomach hurt. So I can't imagine what everybody else in that room who actually had projects on the agenda felt like. This particular project, I think, is just an amazing opportunity because it, you know, dramatically extends the affordability of these units in particular. And obviously, they are in need of upgrade, upgrades and repair, and it'll increase really the affordability of the units themselves to the folks that live there with the upgrades and efficiency and windows and really, you know, that, that's the best possible outcome. And then I also just, just want to point out just how much affordable housing we have in our Clark Fork River corridor, which I think is just so wonderful that folks with limited incomes get to live in some really beautiful, desirable places. This is just one of many affordable units that are located in this corridor. I mean, it's the Creekside, and then as you go down, there's the Bridge, Clark Fork Commons, and then, of course, the Solstice and Equinox. And I think I am missing some that are on the opposite side of the river. And I don't think many communities can say that. And I think that's something that we should be really proud of because, you know, it's affordable housing that's in desirable locations and mixed in with, with other incomes. And that is what I think is really special about Missoula. So, thank you.
Ms. Vasika?
Thanks. I would like to relay Akilish's question to staff, if that's possible.
Sure, could you rephrase it? Or? Actually, I think Heather's got her hand raised. Heather?
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to address, and staff should definitely look into it. Equinox and Solstice, we were definitely required to do. When we developed it from scratch, we had to actually do a Loma, which is a, we had to move the boundary of the floodplain because it was an infill site. And so we have to work closely with the hundred-year, thousand-year floodplain when we develop on the river, and I'm sure Clark Fork Commons had to do the same thing. I'm assuming that the developer originally at Creekside had to do similar research because our tax credit investors make us do all the testing and all the risks. And I know for sure, because when we went to purchase it and had to do all of our research on it, that it wasn't in any of the extended floodplain, the longer, you know, hundred-year and five hundred-longer floodplanes. Now, that doesn't mean that we understand climate control, you know, what's happening with our climate changes and the impacts, and it's why we're working on the building envelope as a primary response because we don't, we have heat loads that we haven't ever seen before. And they're routine now. They're not just every once in a while. And so the windows and all those being replaced are really important to us. So, and I, I just wanted to be able to address that because it was a very good question from a public standpoint of that location. And we have to be very careful and dotterize and cross our Ts and make sure that we're dealing with it, especially in buildings that have elevators and pits and, you know, all the things. So, yes, we have looked into that, and it's not a concern, but the city staff can actually look that up as well.
And we have Cassie Trippard, who's city staff. Cassie, I assume you've got more information on this question?
Yeah, I'm Cassie Trippard, Planning Supervisor and the City's Floodplain Administrator. We are currently undergoing a project to remap the floodplain for the Clark Fork River and the Bitterroot River. So while the data is currently in draft stage, we do have new models and data for that stretch of river. I did take a peek at the draft maps during this, and as of now, in the current draft map, as they're shown, none of the structures appear to be in the floodplain.
Thank you. Okay, no, no follow-up, Ms. Vasika?
I, I think we're satisfied. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nugent.
Thank you. I think this is great and definitely will, will support the council signing on to a letter. But I do just want to say thank you, and I'm probably going to say this every time Homeward's ever in front of council, but the work you do in, in Missoula and, and all Montana is so important, and, and we're lucky, lucky to have organizations such as Homeward advocating for, for people in Missoula. And I would just encourage those who are unaware to kind of learn more about all that Homeward does because it goes so far beyond just housing and education. It's just a great group. And on that note, after I've duly complimented you, I hope that Homeward would be willing to come to a committee meeting someday in an informational capacity to educate all of us on, on what we've been talking about tonight and how these credits work and how financing a project works, because I think that that would be very beneficial. So hopefully, that's something you'd consider.
If you don't mind, I'll, I'll answer. I would love to, and I know we only get snippets of time when we're in committee and at council meetings, but I applaud the level of conversation you're already having and the understanding and the want to have long-term affordability. And so we'd be happy to come and talk. It's, it's really refreshing to have you guys be as educated as you are in the decision-making and the leadership you're showing, especially, you know, with the, where the world we're living in. So currently, we'd be happy to come and talk through and get you guys better armed for conversations and just talk through it because there's no exactly right answer, but it is, it warrants and would be a good discussion. We'd be happy to participate at any point you guys would like.
Great. Since we are talking about low income housing tax credits, the, the state legislature last session managed to get a bill through in bipartisan fashion to expand this program. And for reasons I don't quite understand, it got vetoed by the governor. So my hope is that that work will happen again because it was truly a bill supported by Republicans and Democrats and a large coalition of private developers, cities, communities, nonprofit developers. So, you know, the time may come where we need to do a, a, a public, public push to let people know that this is important.
Great.
Thank you. And it may, I may be out of turn, but I would have said something before I hung up about that because it is a very powerful tool. All of Montana is suffering right now, and we could double our production with the credit bill that had been passed and vetoed, and it will be coming back for the session. So thank you for your support.
Great. Ms. Anderson?
So it looks like we will be going on a field trip to Helena to support it. But yes, I want to echo what my council member, or fellow council member, Mr. Nugent, said in response, response to how thankful we are and lucky that you and your colleagues do such amazing work. I'm happy to add my voice of support to this project. It is, and I also want to thank the members on council who were there in two thousand and seventeen who use some creative thinking and tools to allow for you folks to buy it because you are good stewards and, and keeping it from, you know, letting you be competitive within the market to be the ones who have now ownership of this so that you can continue to work to preserve this really important housing asset in our community for folks at the very bottom scale of the affordability. And I think it's, you know, I'm really hoping that you are successful because it, you know, we in Missoula are not unlike other communities in terms of the pinch that we are seeing post-COVID and, and some of it leading up to that. And we are trying to utilize the tools that we have and create new ones and be creative in what we have the ability to do with developers and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and our CBD, our Community Block. Oh, I get that acronym wrong every time. But we need the state to help, and this is where they can. And this is, you know, a really important way for them to, you know, award these dollars to trusted partners like you to really be able to rehab this facility and think about it from a more long-term, you know, utilize upgrading those materials. And then, you know, going through each unit and thinking about things like windows because that also helps the individual homeowner who lives there. And, and, you know, as we all are looking at our family's budgets and, you know, trying to figure out how to pinch pennies and, and absorb some of the effects of inflation, you know, and rising electric bills is not helpful. And so the fact that that is not only, that's a significant component of this is an overall really important, and will have an impact on these families. So, you know, we're doing what we can, and we need our partners at the state to do what they can, and I'm happy to support this. And once again, just thank you guys so much. And you're really such an important component of what makes Missoula a really amazing place and, and all the work that you do. So, thank you.
Ms. Becerra?
Thanks. Thanks, I'll be brief. I am happy to support this motion tonight and also sing Homeward's praises for everything that it does in our community. It is not easy to provide affordable housing and have it be well-maintained. It is also not easy to provide housing that the, the tenants feel proud to live in, that gives them a sense of belonging, and Homeward has always done so. Has always done that as, as a priority. And I do think that that's a really important part of affordability, to give people and residents a sense of pride in where they live. So I'm happy to support it and happy to always support going to get some of those tax credits whenever they're available. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, everyone. We've had questions, we've had comments, and we've had public comment. Thanks for all of the, the great comments. And Heather, yes, we appreciate you and Homeward very, very much. I think we will go to a roll call vote, Marty.
Okay, this is on the motion to authorize President Jones to sign a letter in support of this application. And I think we start this round with Hess.
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Becerra?
Yes.
Carreno?
Yes.
Kontos?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change your vote? Is ten eyes and two ups.
Thank you, that passes. Thank you for your time, Heather and Emily, appreciate it. And I look forward to seeing that. Alrighty, the last item under our public hearings tonight is an ordinance generally amending Title V City Business Licenses and Regulations to incorporate regulations concerning legislative changes in the cannabis industry, reorganize definitions, and update outdated process language. And we have Mr. Stark here to present tonight and Cassie Trippard and Madsen also here?
She is absent tonight. But I'll get us started. So you can all see my slides, correct?
Yes, we can.
Great. So I'm Cassie Trippard, as she mentioned, a Planning Supervisor. And I'm here with Spencer Stark, an Associate Planner. Madsen Mathias, another lead on this project, was unable to attend tonight. So I will be presenting in her place. Community Planning Development Innovation Staff have drafted amendments to Title V City Business Licenses and Regulation Ordinance in response to necessary maintenance items and the legalization of recreational or adult use cannabis in two thousand and twenty one. In order to accommodate the increase in the number of cannabis businesses and their unique nature, staff are proposing a new business license category for cannabis. Additionally, staff are proposing air quality mitigation requirements in order to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the community, as well as a reorganization of all Title V definitions for improved legibility and an update of outdated process language. Though not included in the proposed ordinance before you today, we will also discuss our findings related to energy conservation regulations in regard to cannabis cultivation and what options the city of Missoula has moving forward. At this hearing, we would like guidance from city council on interest in pursuing energy conservation regulations and the timing of this project, if there is interest. Final consideration for adopting an ordinance amending Title V will be on August eighth. So before discussing the proposed ordinance changes, I want to take a step back and review how we got here today. In two thousand and twenty, Ballot Initiative one ninety passed and was followed by the approval of House Bill seven oh one, which legalized the cultivation, transport, retail, and possession of recreational cannabis and cannabis products within Montana. This permitted recreational cannabis businesses to operate in counties where the majority of voters supported Initiative one ninety, including Missoula County. In response to the state's legalization of recreational cannabis use, CPDI staff proposed amendments to Title twenty zoning code to accommodate new definitions and impacts of recreational cannabis use within the city. On November second, two thousand and twenty one, Planning Board recommended to city council that the zoning amendments include energy conservation regulates, regulations for cannabis cultivation. And on November twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty one, city council voted to approve staff's recommended changes to Title twenty zoning code, omitting the amendment proposed by Planning Board and directed CPDI staff to amend Title V, the City Business Licenses and Regulation Ordinance, to incorporate revisions regarding energy consumption for cannabis cultivation facilities. Then on January first, two thousand and twenty two, the Montana State Department of Revenue permitted medical cannabis businesses licensed on or prior to November third, two thousand and twenty to begin operating as recreational cannabis businesses. In early two thousand and twenty two, staff researched the energy impacts of cannabis cultivation and how other communities have regulated energy consumption. This research was compiled and issued white paper and presented to Land Use and Planning Committee on February ninth, two thousand and twenty two. During the process for drafting the white paper, staff were made aware that Montana state law may prohibit mandatory energy efficiency requirements that exceed those mandated by the state. Staff then drafted an ordinance aligned with the white paper energy conservation recommendations and sent this to the Montana State Building and Commercial, Commercial Measurements Bureau for review. This was followed by a meeting with a representative of the Bureau, Eric Copeland, on April twelfth, two thousand and twenty two. The state's review of the draft ordinance confirmed the energy requirements for cannabis cultivation are not compliant with state law. The Montana Code annotated section fifty sixty one oh two six requires local energy conservation standards that exceed the energy conservation standards contained in the state building code to be voluntary and incentive based only. And I will cover this again in just a few slides. The state, or this state requirement has prevented city staff from moving forward with an energy conservation regulations at this time because the initial proposal would have required energy provisions rather than incentivize them. A memo detailing options for voluntary incentive based energy regulations has been included with the staff report. Despite not moving forward with the energy requirements at this time, revisions to Title V are still necessary in order to create a new business license category and include new cannabis related definitions. The State Department of Revenue has already started accepting recreational licenses from existing medical businesses and will begin accepting recreational licenses from new businesses in July of two thousand and twenty three. The current proposed ordinance generally amends Title V in order to allow for this new license category. So I will now go over the proposed amendments to Title V in detail. First, in chapter five oh four, definitions, staff proposes the inclusion of new definitions pertaining to the cannabis industry and related businesses or business licensing. These definitions align with those entitled twenty zoning code and state law. The ordinance proposes consolidating all definitions under one section number, which re-formates the current system where all definitions are given their own section. This allows for increased legibility and flexibility for future amendments. Second, in chapter five oh eight, relating to fees and authority, staff proposes replacing the term city treasurer with the city as the city treasurer is no longer responsible for collecting fees, issuing, or filing business licenses. The choice to use the language of the city instead of development services or another more specific title is to allow for processes to change over time without code updates. Staff also introduce a new cannabis business license category within this section to enable the city council to authorize and set fees for the license type. Third, in chapter five oh eight, relating to cannabis business licenses, staff propose the creation of a new cannabis business license category. This is because the existing licensing types in Title V are general business licenses and office space, retail, wholesale, or warehouse space license. Currently cannabis business licenses fall within the general business license category. With the new zoning requirements around cannabis businesses, planning staff require additional information to be provided by each business to ensure compliance with the regulations. Though the code currently allows us to collect this information, the specific submittal requirements are not listed in the code, making it more difficult for applicants and staff to get through the process quickly. An entirely new set of requirements, application form and licensing type is proposed to provide upfront guidance to businesses seeking a license. The information requested includes many similar criteria as the general business license with the addition of cultivation canopy area, approved tier size, previous use, and proposed use aligning with the new zoning use classifications. Furthermore, zoning use classifications differ from building code structure occupancy types. Prior to the legalization of recreational cannabis, dispensaries were reviewed and approved by CPDI building staff as B business occupancy under a patient care model. This was due to the medical nature of cannabis at the time. And following legalization of recreational cannabis, all dispensaries are now considered retail by zoning code and M mercantile occupancy by the building code. The M mercantile occupancy aligns with the zoning retail use classification. And due to this change in use and occupancy type, dispensaries that were previously allowed as a B occupancy will now need to complete a change of use building permit to an M occupancy as a requirement of the building department. Asking for a building and zoning code related information on the front end and in a streamlined, consistent process will also aid staff with data collection and speed up permit review times. If adopted by city council, the amendments to Title V would require existing cannabis businesses to apply for a cannabis business license rather than renewing the existing general business license at their next renewal date. Completion of the new cannabis business license would document existing cannabis uses, legal nonconforming status in terms of cultivation canopy area and zoning district and building code compliance. Businesses required to submit a change of use permit by the building department can be easily identified during the business license renewal process. So in summary, the proposed updates to Title V aid in the implementation of required zoning and building department processes and are intended to provide clear guidance to the applicant regarding information required for license approval. While reviewing the application requirements for cannabis businesses, staff recognized the opportunity to incorporate additional general business license application requirements. These include building address, previous use of space to be occupied, and amount of square footage in the building or suite to be used for the business. Specifically, staff use this information to determine building occupancy type, adequate parking, and substitution of legal nonconforming uses. Staff currently request this information during review, so the requirements are not really new. But the ordinance proposes to list the requirements explicitly in Title V to provide better guidance to applicants. Fourth and finally, staff propose the creation of a new chapter, five one twenty, entitled Cannabis, which includes requirements applicable to any cannabis cultivation or manufacturing facility seeking a business license, unless explicitly exempted. Staff have found both cultivation and manufacturing of cannabis products emits odors, mold, chemicals, and volatile organic compounds known as VOCs, all of which negatively impact air quality. Carbon filters are currently the most effective technology for mitigating these negative impacts. The proposal to require carbon filters was included in the original white paper and was found to comply with state law in our meeting with Eric Copeland. City staff intend to continue to move forward with regulations addressing these impacts in the current proposed amendments. Staff's proposal would require cannabis cultivation and manufacturing businesses to install and maintain carbon filters that are properly sized for the cultivation or cannabis product manufacturing area. This requirement is intended to reduce odor for the benefit of neighboring properties as well as to protect worker safety. This concludes staff's recommended amendments to Title V. And next, I would like to circle back to energy conservation regulations, including the constraints in state law and options for moving forward. So to reiterate, Montana Code annotated section fifty sixty one oh two six requires local energy conservation standards and access of those set by the state to meet the two following requirements. And those are that they must be voluntary and they must be encouraged by incentives, but never required. And I will now give the floor to Spencer Stark to detail options for voluntary incentive based energy regulations within the city of Missoula. Thank you.
So as Cassie said, based upon the limitations set by the state for Missoula to set energy regulations, staff has developed three possible incentive methods to comply with the state while meeting the direction given to staff by city council. The first incentive would be a relief from current canopy area requirements. So currently zoning code applies cannabis cultivation use classifications based upon the canopy area. Title twenty does not limit canopy area within limited and heavy industrial districts and restricts canopy area in business, commercial, and limited industrial residential zoning districts, which permit less intensive uses. To incentivize compliance with the proposed energy consumption treatments, city council could allow cannabis cultivators to increase the amount of canopy area beyond what is currently needed in zoning. This will allow cultivators to increase production while decreasing the net energy consumption of the operation. This strategy for implementing an incentive program that is compliant with state requirements would require amendments to Title twenty zoning code and would not require the additional establishment of fees. However, currently, the limits on canopy area in different Title twenties zoning districts were structured to be comparable to the existing permitted uses within each zone district. The potential increase, increased impacts besides energy consumption in these areas is expanded by permitting the expansion of canopy area. The second option would be to amend zoning to further restrict canopy area and then to incentivize energy consumption by relieving to the current canopy areas established in Title twenty. And finally, the third option would be to set a cannabis cultivation fee. The fee would likely have to be somewhat significant in order to adequately incentivize people and motivate individuals to participate within the energy conservation program. As the difference between implementing LED lights versus traditional high HID lighting, which is the traditional horde cultural lighting, that the difference across there is somewhat significant. Our next slide. In addition, and after receiving feedback at the initial LEU meeting, committee meeting, I believe, two weeks ago, staff is now reflecting on the timeline for implementation. July twenty twenty three is the date that has been set to allow for cannabis licenses to be available previously non qualified groups. These are the groups that did not hold a medical marijuana license within the state of Montana prior to November third of, oh gosh, was that twenty twenty or perhaps twenty twenty one? This date has been the projected end date for implementing any of the proposed energy policy related to cannabis cultivation. Now that we're aware of the structural limitations that municipalies are bound to by the state authorities, staff is considering how to approach energy as it relates to cannabis and to other industries as well. As council is aware, CPDI, as well as other city departments, will be embarking on a broad campaign effort in the coming months. City staff will be looking at the city's policies, plans, and regulations and making recommendations on how to update and innovate those policies. Part of this process will consider energy use and would result in recommendations at a more broad level and incentives to address high energy consumption across sectors, including cannabis. Staff is now favoring implementing cannabis energy policies as part of a broader energy code. This will allow for staff to develop a more holistic approach to energy consumption in Missoula, may reduce the doubling of those efforts. City staff has continued to review and approve in more projects. But we are seeing an increase in permits and are focusing our time getting develop, develops, development out. This includes permits and subdivision. And we are also beginning to shift our effort on previous ones. We're considering if it would be best to move forward with fees and other energy policies as part of a broader effort, or if moving forward with energy policies specific to cannabis is more favorable given the July date. Staff is looking for direction on which we, city council would prefer. And in addition, any further thoughts or feedback regarding the incentives proposed thus far? Circling back to the Title V calendar, tonight, we are holding the public hearing for the Title V amendments being considered by city council this evening with a final consider, consideration for the Title V amendments proposed this evening on August eighth. For further information for those members of the public who may be interested, more information can be found on Engage Missoula, which is our public notice website at the link shown on the screen below or by navigating to our website and clicking on city initiated project. Next slide. So staff is recommending a motion concerning the proposed Title V amendments as follows. City council adopt ordinance generally amending Title V Missoula municipal code the city business license and regulation ordinance to incorporate additional provisions within chapter five point zero four definitions, five point zero eight license, licensing, licensing provisions generally, and creation of a new chapter five point one twenty entitled cannabis to incorporate regulations concerning legislative changes in the cannabis industry, reorganize definitions, and update outdated process language. This concludes staff's presentation and we are available for questions and discussion. This concludes staff's presentation and will be available for questions and discussion. Thank you.
Great, thank you. First of all, pursuant to our roles, I'm gonna go to public comment on this item. If there's anyone that wants to provide public comment. Not seeing anyone attending virtually, but if you'd like to come up, those in the room, come on up and you don't have to spell your name this time that we got it.
Appreciate that. Ocular Schindler, and I am a little surprised that there is nobody else to speak on this, given the number of dispensaries here in this town especially. I was wondering if anyone had done any studies at all on how many of these businesses are coming from out of state. From my knowledge, it's many. And there are many local businesses that are having to directly compete. Seems that there's enough people attending to allow for this many dispensaries, but I don't know if you've looked at studies, but we have more dispensaries here than per capita just about anywhere else. Perhaps you might consider limiting numbers, perhaps looking at the businesses closer for who owns them and where. Just a thought. It's, in my opinion, a little bit overboard, perhaps here locally, given the numbers of dispensaries everywhere, everywhere. And what happens that I've seen is that because of the numbers of businesses holding these locations, other businesses are then impacted via their rents and the press of number of businesses wanting these retail locations. So, consider the impact as a whole, perhaps. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Okay, comment or questions from council regarding this topic? Ms. Vasika.
Thanks. If I'm, correct me if I'm mistaken, but didn't we, right before this marijuana became legal in Montana last year, I believe, I think it was called White Paper, didn't we have a discussion about how many marijuana dispensaries were allowed in a given proximity of businesses?
Correct. With the Title twenty zoning code updates that were passed last year, rather than capping, the current zoning regulations require that businesses coming in as of that date when the zoning amendment was made be five hundred feet apart, trying to free up some retail space in between those businesses.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions from council? Mr. Hess.
May I make a comment?
Go ahead.
Okay, I appreciate your comment. I think, you know, we did, we did look at those bands, those thresholds of having them being a certain distance apart. One of the things that you'd see is that if the business existed before the zoning, they'd be illegal, nonconforming. So, you might see some that are closer than five hundred feet and that'd be why. But it's, I mean, there's a ton of them and I think it's an appropriate question to be continuing to ask. Another thing that is in the state law is that, and a lot of this is state, but the other thing that's in the state law is that the initial providers were the ones who are able to operate now. And I think that was designed to give preference to local businesses. But July twenty twenty-three is when the floodgates open, if you will, for out of state or other new providers. So, I think just one thing for everyone to consider here is trying to get our regulations dialed how we want them before, before July of twenty twenty-three is going to be really important.
Thanks. Mr. Carlin.
Yeah, I'll just try and ask your other question, but also just point out that the state, you know, blocked marijuana from being grown outdoors with natural sunlight, which would have been, you know, given the freedom to grow it wherever you, I mean, to grow it outdoors would have been great and would have saved a lot more energy and we wouldn't have to go through such a process here. But the state also should really expunge everybody, everybody's criminal records too for marijuana use in the past. And, but I guess my, to ask your question, I'm just curious if staff knows how many are out of state or are they all from Montana? I know that all the marijuana has to be grown here, but just to try and ask the public commenters question.
Spencer, correct me if I'm wrong, but at this point, we do not know whether those state licensed businesses are from in-state or out-of-state. I guess if any are from out-of-state, they would have had to have been licensed as a medical grower provider in Montana prior to November twenty twenty.
Yeah, we, our business licenses, even if we were to collect data on where they're addressed, that wouldn't necessarily tell us whether or not they're operating from out of state. We collect where their offices would be operating out of, so that's data we didn't put through the process.
Thank you, Ms. Becerra.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, but one of them is pretty basic. Do you know how much a business license fee is right now that we're getting from businesses?
I can certainly look into that right now. And it does vary depending on the type of business license. I know that much.
I can ask my other question while you're looking.
That would be great.
And then in your recommendations, you had three recommendations, relief from canopy area, amending zoning, and cannabis cultivation fee. Are you proposing one of those or all three of them to have some sort of, you know, I can see where one might be more effective for some business or some operation than the other one. Are you thinking one of the three or a combination? Yeah.
Just for clarification, you mean one of the three original or maybe there's more proposed, I guess, methods for reducing energy consumption or are you talking about the different incentives?
I guess it was the different incentives. You had a slide with recommendations and three of them. One would be relief from canopy area. Number two was amending zoning to allow for current canopy as an incentive. And the other one was cultivation fee.
So, I think we had originally considered these implementing one, but I believe the fee and either of the zoning release could be implemented. We had considered them as selecting one of those options and hadn't considered the combination at this time. The only thing that comes up off the top of my head when considering them is that if somebody opted into, let's say, zoning relief as an incentive, they'd still be responsible for the full cannabis license fee. And, and anybody who would opt out of the, or would opt into incentive program to waive the fee would still be required to comply with the zoning. So, at least that's kind of how we had considered it. If there are other ways which you would like to see these incentive structure staff can do some follow-up, structure them for whether they're compatible.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, I did get a number for the current business license. As of now, it's considered they fall under general business license type as commercial. And those fees are a hundred and sixty dollars as a base fee for four or fewer full-time employees. And then each additional owner or employee beyond four adds an additional forty dollar charge per person.
Okay, that's, that's good to know. I guess as a comment, I would really like us to find a way to have the carrot and the stick. You know, maybe a fee and also some zoning-based approach to, to this. And I, I have concerns about, it seems like we're waiting for so many things to be addressed by our code reform and that is gonna take a while and I know there's not necessarily a sense of urgency on this, but I do think that we might have to wait a few years to see any action come out of the code reform. So, I would like us to think about how to address this before, before then, if possible. And I appreciate all the research and everything that you have given us so that we can make some decisions at some point. Thank you.
Ms. West?
First of all, I want to thank staff for just spending incredible amount of time on this over the last, I don't even know, it's been a while. Almost a year probably, and doing some really incredible research. I think, I, I don't have a question, just comment. I, I think my preference would be towards the fee as an incentive. And I think in part for the reasons that Mirata stated, I don't know that zoning incentive would be appropriate and, and would also take a long time to figure out. And I think a business license or cultivation fee would be something that we could implement more quickly and not potentially, you know, derail some part of our zoning overhaul process. And then I also just had a brief comment. It's been really interesting to watch in parallel how Montana has rolled out the cultivation of marijuana compared to Oklahoma, which is my, I guess, where I went to college and where I came from. And there they did allow just the, you know, like cultivation of marijuana in, you know, fields. And it has had a really dramatic and kind of horrible effect on land prices throughout the entire state of Montana, not Montana, Oklahoma. And there were some definite unforeseen consequences that have really eroded the affordability of, of ag land or developable land in general. And that is not an added layer of affordability pressures that we need in Montana. I think we have our land values, especially in our communities or, you know, are already incredibly high and we don't need to compete with marijuana growers for that land. And then just generally, I'm not sure that we actually have the appropriate day length for, to induce flowering in marijuana plants in Montana. So, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Hess.
Thanks. On the question of how to address energy consumption, I guess, so this hearing is not really about that and, but we do need to address that. And so, what I'd propose is that maybe we either bring this back after the conclusion of this public hearing, bring it back to LUP and have, have a discussion and direct staff in that way. We could also, if there's, if there's a need, we could maybe do a small working group that could involve interested members, just to kind of talk through it informally. But I think, I think we should circle back to it after the, after the public hearing. And just, of course, remember that we're, we're prioritizing the scariest resource we have, which is staff time. So, do we want to do it now and spend staff time on this thing? That's really important, but that's at the exclusion of other things that are really important. And I think it's really important that we have an understanding of what the trade-offs are there. So, maybe if we just bring this back to a committee meeting sometime in the near future, that might be the best approach on gathering feedback.
Okay, thank you. I'm not seeing any other raised hands for questions at this point. This is a public hearing that will be kept open until August eighth, since we have August first off. And then we can finalize what is in the motion, which is basically reorganizing and clarifying our business licenses, regulations, that type of thing. And then on the energy usage component that we keep discussing, but kind of chasing our tail on, I think maybe we need to have some discussions, as Mr. Hess said, create a small working group. And if there are counselors interested in that, let Mr. Hess know as Chair of LUP. And that can be in coordination with our planning office, because they have a work plan, of course, and how to, how to make all of that synchronize and work this fall. All right, are there any other questions from counselors on this item then? Thank you, staff, for all the great information. We will keep this item open until August eighth, when we will have our final vote on it. Okay, moving on, we have no committee reports. We have no new business. No communications from the mayor. I will pass on that. General comments from city council members. I will start with Ms. Vasika.
Thank you. There are a couple of things that I wanted to discuss tonight, I guess a few things, because there are three things I want to discuss. In the past and earlier this evening, to the voting no to calling the question, which to our constituents means to end debate. The reason why I voted no on that is because I don't like the way that it's stated, because I prefer to discuss. I prefer not to debate, because when debating, it means that I am right, you are wrong, and this is why. And that's how I feel like debates are, and I like to have more of a discussion. And if my colleague is not pleased with the discussion being ended, then I'd be happy to continue on until everybody is pleased. So, that, that is why I usually vote no when I'm calling the question. So, I just want to give my explanation on that. Last week, there was an informational item in committee for regarding the sleeping in, and there were a couple of newspaper articles about that. And I don't think that we're gonna bring that up to discuss any little bit further in the future until things actually start happening with that. So, I just wanted to give my, my brief thoughts about the outcome on that. I am happy to hear that we are not going to make this permanently affordable housing, which has been talked about in the past. This is real prime real estate and being so close to the river and with the recent reconstruction of Russell Street Bridge, it is, a lot of developers should, should be looking at it. I was concerned to hear in the meeting that we are not going to be trying to maximize profits and we will instead be trying to maximize implementation of the Broadway Master Plan. While I understand that planning is important, our taxpayers are holding on by a thread and I would like to give them any relief that we can give them. There are folks on fixed incomes that are being taxed out of their homes, and this year with an expected property tax increase, it will only be worse. This property or the sleeping in property is going back on the property tax rolls is going to be a little bit of a help to relieve Missoula's citizens. Because while the city does own this land and property, it has taken off the tax rolls and no property tax dollars are acquired from it. And that does affect all the citizens, property owners and renters alike. I would prefer the funds from any potential sale to go to reimburse the fund that the sale originally came from and give any remaining profits to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, if not the general fund. In this case, it was the MRA that originally provided the funds. And if we don't reimburse the MRA, the original funds, then it's kind of a roundabout way of the MRA donating the one point one million dollars directly to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, since the Affordable Housing Trust Fund had not existed at that time. Those are my thoughts on that. Finally, on a happier note, I wanted to let the public know that on August second twenty twenty-two, from five thirty PM to seven thirty PM, on the west side of Shields Parking Lot at the mall, there is the National Night Out. It's the Missoula Police Department participates in this nationwide event. It is a national community building campaign that promotes police community partnerships. I went last year, although for a brief amount of time, but it was really cool. There was a lot of demonstrations and free Big Dipper ice cream to kids and that's gonna happen again this year. A couple of the highlights, the Missoula Fire Department's going to be creating a water splash pad area for kids to play in. There's going to be a car seat check and that is going to be by appointment and they will be able to accommodate some car seat checks that same day. So, please call four oh six five five two six two nine zero to schedule a car seat check. The Missoula Police Department Special Teams, SWAT, K nine bomb squad, motor unit, crime prevention evidence and patrol will be there. And Lifelight may be doing a landing and a takeoff. Again, that's August second from five thirty to seven thirty on the west side of Shields Parking Lot at the mall. I hope to see you all there. I do play I hope to see you all there. I do play volleyball on Tuesday nights, but we're not that good. So I might be ending early and be able to come. So those are my thoughts for tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Cantos.
I'll pass. Thanks.
Ms. Anderson?
Ditto on the National Night Out. I was gonna announce that, but a couple of things I want to take, I take a moment to thank the quick response to the fire that broke out over the weekend at the Y. I was driving down the hill after being gone this weekend and came down Evero Hill and saw a very black hillside and coming scary close to a lot of homes. And I'm sure all of those folks are breathing a sigh of relief and thinking all the first responders to that. And unfortunately, our wet, cold spring has now left a lot of, once was lush brush, now nice and tinder-like material. So everyone needs to be extra careful as we are enjoying a beautiful Montana summer. And we would like it to stay that way and not be filled with wildfire smoke. But the one thing I wanted to point out, I think that we think a lot about the generations that come behind us and whether or not they're going to be up to the task sometime. And I was blown away with our two applicants for the youth climate position on, who interviewed last week in committee. And if you want to have a moment of being reassured in humanity and know that the next generation is going to take good care of us, I encourage you to go watch that committee meeting and, and see the two young folks who applied for that and the way that they answered the questions and the poise and the, the, the knowledge they bring and the enthusiasm. You know, I think about what I was doing at that age and it was not applying for these committees and reading the city's climate action plan. And I just, you know, was so impressed and I just felt it, it was a good moment in, you know, somewhat troubling times these days. And so if everyone, anyone needs a feel-good about that the next generation is going to take good care of us and we, it's our job to make it as easy on them as possible, go and watch committee meeting for last Wednesday. Thanks.
Mr. Nugent?
Thank you. I'll, I'll be brief. Today Senator Danes issued a statement stating that he feels in the year 2022 that marriage is between a man and a woman, and he came out against the marriage equality bill that passed the House last week. I just want to say that, you know, he, he actually said that he thinks this is a distraction, which I find disgraceful, for lack of a better word. And I just want to say that, you know, if there are any children out there who have heard one of their senators say that their, their family is a distraction because they have two dads or two moms, that we stand with you and we support you and we do not think you're a distraction. And, you know, there's right and there's wrong. And I think that two consenting adults should be able to marry each other and it's nobody else's business. And the fact that we still have to have these conversations in 2022 astounds me and people need to pay attention to what's actually going on.
You, Mr. Carlini?
Pass.
Becerra?
Pass. Thanks.
Mr. Hess?
Counsel was invited to an inclusive interdisciplinary walk audit last Friday, and I attended that with Sandra and had a great time and learned a ton. A walk audit is an activity, I'm gonna read a little bit here from a Minnesota Department of Health document, but a walk audit is an activity in which community members and decision makers observe and identify opportunities to improve the comfort and the safety of the surrounding environment. Walk audits are common, a common public engagement activity used in pedestrian planning. People with disabilities are more often, more likely to rely on walking for daily trips and may be more aware, aware of and impacted by the problems in the transportation network. When a street is accessible for people with disabilities, it is accessible for all people. So this audit had a couple dozen people and included several individuals with, with disabilities using mobility devices or individuals with vision impairments using, using dogs, guide dogs or canes for assistance. And it was incredibly illuminating and, and informative and showed the good and bad of our transportation network. We started here in city council chambers, walked down Higgins, went across the Higgins Bridge and looked at some of the new pop-up traffic calming by Bernice's Bakery. And it was just incredible to, to learn what what might present a barrier for someone just getting around our downtown area. And I would encourage anyone to go on one of those if, if, when, when there's another one in the future. I want to thank Travis Hoffman from Summit Independent Living and Samantha Chase from the National Federation for the Blind Missoula Chapter for putting this on along with Meg Tracy from U M's Rural Institute for Inclusive Communities, as well as John Sand and, and Ben Weiss, our, our city planning staff. It was a really good experience. Thanks.
You, Ms. West?
So I just want to remind everybody that the fair is coming up. I think folks don't realize just how much work goes into putting the fair together every year. A bunch of kids across all of Missoula County 4-H Clubs showed up on Saturday and spent their entire Saturday morning setting up all the corrals and they will be back next week, filling all of those with wood chips. And making sure that the barns are ready for the public when the fair opens on August 10th. And I also want to remind folks that if people are wanting to enter their arts and crafts and cooking items and repurposed creations into the fair, that deadline is this Friday. There are a few later deadlines, but most of those are garden related. So if you're growing squash and zucchini and flowers, those can be entered up to, I think, the first week of August. And then I also just want to say that Montana has the honor of hosting the 4-H, the National 4-H Western Heritage Conference this week. So there are quite a few folks from Missoula County that are headed to participate in the conference. It's part shooting competition and part history conference. And we get to explore all sorts of historical events that took place in that area between 191860 and 1900. So I'm excited to see what this event is all about and to meet folks all across the country that get to visit great folks. So enjoy the rest of the week.
Thank you very much, everyone. We have no miscellaneous communications, reports or announcements. So thank you for your, oh, oh, I'm sorry, Amber. I'm sorry. Okay, Amber Sherrill, last one.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm sorry I'm not there in person. I would love to see all of your faces in person, but that wasn't possible for me. I actually don't have any of my own comments, but I really appreciate a couple of my fellow council people's comments. So I just want to add a couple of quick things. My board mate, Mr. Nugent, I really appreciate those comments and I could not agree more. I, I find it shocking that, that we are still talking about this, to be honest. And Mr. Hess, I just want to say, if you had spent as much time as I have with my elderly mother, you would really appreciate the walking tour that you and Sandra did because sidewalks, ramps, door widths, little, little tiny things that we don't notice in the door that you cannot get a wheelchair over. It, it's, it's in. So I really appreciate those comments and I have nothing more. Thanks so much, you guys.
Thanks, Amber. Sorry to have overlooked you there. All right, we have no miscellaneous communications, reports or announcements. Thank you for your service and we will stand adjourned.